Are you under the weather?
Yeah, but not contagious suffering. Not dead, I'm very excited. I've tried to conserve my energy.
What's after? Everybody here?
Yeah.
Where is the missing Brian?
I follow strictly the 24 hours. The last time I was on was four days. Actually, it's fine.
This is called. Two thousand call.
There we go.
All this meeting in order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Member Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. We're going to start off tonight with a special presentation. Mary Jane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, and Council members. Mary Jane Van Cleve, the interim administrator for the Department of Parks and Recreation. With me tonight is Carrie Nasser, our director, and Sean Conway, our supervisor. I'm going to introduce Jake Davies, who is going to provide us a very compelling and appreciative story.
Hi, thank you all. Good evening, Council, Council President, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Jake Davies, and I am a recreation coordinator for the city of Renton. I oversee our aquatics and outdoor programming. Tonight, I stand before you to highlight the actions of valor and composure of a very mature young man right here, Mr. Braden McSweeney. During an incident that happened in August this past summer, before I begin, I'd like to expand, um, excuse me, extend a thank you to all of those in attendance in support of Mr. McSweeney, including his family, sitting right over here. I've had the distinct honor of knowing Mr. McSweeney both professionally and personally. This past summer, he worked as a lifeguard at the Henry Moses Aquatic Center. In addition to this, and to Mr. McSweeney's dismay, he may have better recognized me as his high school water polo coach. Throughout my interactions with Mr. McSweeney, I've witnessed him consistently exhibit characteristics of leadership and integrity, both as an athlete and newly minted city employee. However, there was one moment in time where Mr. McSweeney surpassed my expectations of him and many others. While heading into work one evening in August at the Henry Moses Aquatic Center for an evening program, Mr. McSweeney came upon the aftermath of a serious collision between a cyclist and a vehicle. I will now leave out the specific details in order to respect and preserve the privacy of the individual that was injured. But recognizing urgent and decisive actions needed, Mr. McSweeney, without hesitation, provided emergency first aid and facilitated the next steps in emergency care, including retrieving critical equipment and alerting the nearby aquatic center staff. To most, witnessing this incident and its outcome would have been overwhelming and challenging to know what to do next, let alone to step into action. In that critical moment, Mr. McSweeney, at just 16 years old, demonstrated competence, initiative, and immense courage. Our lifeguards here at the city of Renton are trained to provide what is referred to as basic life support in emergencies. This is how we treat critical conditions at the scene of an incident before those who are trained in advanced life support are able to take over. This is a crucial step in the chain of actions that increase the likelihood of recovery or even survival. This young man executed those vital steps with calmness and clarity. Braden McSweeney's sense of duty rose above what we would normally expect of a young person of similar age, but is a reminder to our young staff and students that are capable of heroic actions such as these. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Council President for recognizing Mr. Braden McSweeney's actions on that fateful evening and for his embodiment of integrity, valor, and a sense of community. I can attest that he is not only a gifted athlete, but also a responsible and compassionate individual. Who deserves this recognition? Thank you again.
Got one more part to this, sir, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council members, it's my honor to be here tonight and celebrate this occasion with Braden. And we have something special for him, a life-saving award. If I can read the citation for it. For your exceptional performance, you are hereby conferred the Rent Police Department Life Saving Medal. In August of this year, you came upon a collision with serious injuries. Being conscious of the gravity of the medical emergency, you acted purposefully to provide life-saving care, without which the person more than likely would not have or would have succumbed to their injuries. Your efforts confirm your commitment to the safety of community. Your extraordinary service, integrity, and valor are in keeping with the finest traditions of the city and reflect great credit upon yourself. Congratulations. Nice work, man.
Okay. Is this in order? All right. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing, and Jim Seitz, you know, present.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Again, my name is Jim Seitz, Transportation Director, and I have a brief presentation for the public hearing on the consideration of an ordinance adding an additional one-tenth of one percent sales tax within the boundaries of the Renton Transportation Benefit District. In way of background, first slide here. There we go. In way of background, the Renton Transportation Benefit District was formed just this year. It provides the local funding options to cities to meet their unfunded transportation needs. And two programs in particular, back in April of this year, we briefed the council on that need additional funding because of the unfunding needs. Our pavement preservation programs, the program that overlays our streets, provides preservation treatments that our maintenance staff do. And we're falling behind that program, and we want to maintain the streets. So we're looking for additional funding for that program on an annual basis, as well as the walkway program also has unfunded needs, and we talked about those back in April. So now the next step in the process, now that we've formed the Transportation Benefit District, is to create a funding mechanism for it. So that's what you have before you is an ordinance. And this particular ordinance adds a one-tenth of one percent sales tax for a 10-year period. And you also have an option after the 10-year period to renew it upon the majority vote of the council. The revenue that's collected for this Benefit District is just for transportation improvements, restricted to that. The new section of the ordinance also directs the city clerk and finance director to submit the approved ordinance to the Washington State Department of Transportation. And as long as they receive the approved ordinance by mid-January, they'll start collecting the additional sales tax and April 1st of 2024. And a couple of months after that, we should start receiving revenue for it. As far as where the recommendation for where the funding will go, we're anticipating about $3.5 million in annual revenue for the Transportation Benefit District. Where staff is recommending that the money go towards the 10-year pavement preservation plan and to the walkway plan. You see the numbers up there, 1.5 to the preservation program and 2 million annually to the walkway plan. Other projects could be eligible for this type of funding as well, but it would have to be within our transportation improvement plan in order to receive funding from the Transportation Benefit District. And I did want to mention also that we do have a lot of detailed information the public can access on our city website. We've created an interactive story map to view our recommended treatments on Renton city's streets over the next 10 years. And we also have one for our comprehensive walkway plan of where the public can go in and see what we're missing sidewalks and what we're creating high priority areas where we need to have sidewalks in the future that this funding will go towards. And with that, I'll conclude by putting staff's recommendation up on the screen. It's to adopt an ordinance, amending Title V, adding a new section, Chapter 5, 27035, which is for additional sales tax and use tax for the Renton Transportation Benefit District. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Jim. Do we have any correspondence?
I received no correspondence on this topic, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I know we have nobody signed up to speak, and there's nobody online. What's the, which is the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move we close the public meeting, public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that we close the public meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you. We're on to administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Be sure and attend the Battle of the Badges Holiday Lights event on Friday, December 8th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. At the Renton Community Center parking lot, 1715 Maple Valley Highway. Drive through a magical holiday light display where public safety agencies from around the region transform their vehicles into festive displays and vote for your favorite. For more information, contact Stephanie Hines at S-S-H-I-N-E-S@rentonwa.gov. Bring your family and enjoy the 2023 Renton Winter Lights at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park, 1201 Lake Washington Boulevard. Lights will be on display daily from 4:00 to 9:00 through January 1st of 2024. Philip Arnold Park is now open for the community's enjoyment. The project provided new facilities and features in line with public feedback from the Park's Recreation and Natural Areas Plan and expanded access through ADA improvements. One area of the park remains closed for new stair and ramp railings. Installation is anticipated in February of 2024. The Philip Arnold Park improvements were funded by a council-approved park bond, park impact fees, and Charles L. Custer Renton Park Departmental Memorial Fund and King County Park Levy Funds. Repairs and maintenance at the Liberty Park State, geez, Liberty Park Skate Park are extended through Friday, December 8th, due to inclement weather. For everyone's safety, follow directions on all posted signs. More information can be found at rentonwa.gov/parks or contact the Parks and Recreation Department at parksandrec@rentonwa.gov. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/trafic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is the audience comment. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Nope. Councilmember Prince?
Um, I know we have quite a few people here tonight to give audience comment.
Thirty, thirty-three or thirty-four?
Thirty-four. I move that we move audience comment to two minutes.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the audience comment time be changed to two minutes. All in favor? Signify. Yes.
Discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Are we only at three minutes? Because we were at five, and now we're at three.
We're at three minutes.
We've been at three for a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that we're shortening the time that people can speak. So I would defer to my colleague, but I think three minutes is fine.
I have, may I? I would. This is our job. It's to listen to the people. Typically, our meetings, they're anywhere between 15, 20 minutes. Maybe on a long night, 30, 45 minutes. I think, you know, we have the time, we have the energy, this is a very hot topic. We've gotten so many correspondents from both sides. I think we need to allow public comment to be as-is and give people the time that they want to have and prepared for to share their piece. I think that's literally our jobs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm gonna wait till the
Yep.
crowd decides to bathe in. The liberative bodies, this is not uncommon for this council or any other deliberative body, when we have a lot of people here to testify. So I stand by my two minutes.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Think it was one, two, this is four, four-two?
Four-three, I think.
Four-three?
That was no.
You are now, okay, four-three. All right, motion carries. So time will be, uh, for audience comments will be two minutes. Okay, so we're going into audience comment here. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. I want to make a couple of statements here. First, this is your opportunity to address the council. Please don't address any council member personally. It's not what this is used for. Stand topic. The other thing is, this is a unique scenario. We've got a lot of people signed up to speak on the minimum wage. The initiative process isn't something that happens often. So I want to just have one clarifying statement before we move on. So I want to quickly share how the proposed recommendation for the pro-con committees were created. After the council's direction on November 20th, our city clerk issued a legal notice posted on our website and with the Renton Reporter. And our Communications Division issued a press release through the regional media contacts, over 350 contacts. Our website and social platforms, seeking local representation, we indicated our preference for Renton residents, employees, and business owners. Nine applied for pro side and six for the con side. In making our recommendations, we looked for a balance by selecting individuals represented with strong connections to Renton. All but one individuals are residents or business owners of Renton. The recommended candidate, candidate who is not a business owner or resident is a member of the organization that led the petition in Renton, and we felt that they could accurately represent the initiative's intent. The council will consider the recommendations and vote on the committee's selection when the vote, and they, when they vote on the resolution. So hopefully that clarifies the process on that. So that being said, when I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak. There'll be a timer right there. When you see the little yellow light, click on that. Means that the time is coming to an end. Please wrap up your thoughts. And with that, oh, please start with your name, city of residence, and what you'll be discussing. And we're going to start off tonight with Ellie Robert Shaw.
Um, hi, my name is Ellie Robert Shaw. I'm a resident of Renton, and I'm here to discuss the increase, or discuss the initiative to increase the minimum wage here in the city of Renton. I make well above minimum wage, but I have experienced price increases going up sharply for everything from groceries to gas to diapers. Just everything is much more expensive. Um, I was recently promoted in my job, and I got a 12% increase in pay. Um, but it's just not enough to keep up. So I feel like even though I'm doing a good job and I'm moving up, I'm not, um, I'm not going forward, I'm going backward. I feel very personally connected to this initiative because it is directly tied to the pay of work, sorry, to the pay of workers here in Renton. Um, I think that as workers, we sink together or we swim together. So I just feel like this is a, this would be a really positive step to pass this. I hope that the post-COVID economic recovery here in Renton will include workers. I don't think that, I think that if the recovery doesn't include workers, it's not a real recovery at all. And I hope very much so that the council passes this initiative outright. I hope that you don't push us into a costly election. Just honestly, that feels like a bet against workers. And I just think that we need to feel the confidence and the support of the council here at this moment right now. Thank you.
All right, next up is Emmanuel Bailey.
Good evening, council members. I'm here again. My name is Emmanuel Bailey Madillo, current Renton resident right now and a young person testifying before all of you because I believe strongly that the city of Renton should pass Raise the Wage Renton Initiative Measure 2302 outright. It is your legal obligation, it is your, it is your responsibility as public servants to choose between two options, to send this measure to a costly election or to pass it in lockstep in solidarity with the working people and the working families of Renton. And I want to, I want to take some time to recognize that as a young person, I've been in this campaign for what is officially 12 months now, a whole year. We launched in January, and we've been planning well long than that. And that's an entire year of my life. I'm 18 now. I started this campaign in 17 years old, when I was a senior in Renton High School. And I think of all the other high schoolers, all the graduates now, the people that I went to class with who are depending on a minimum wage increase in order to make their lives work. I speak for, on behalf of my preschool best friend, who I've known for so many years, who, who lives in Skyway and works a job in Renton and makes minimum wage and says that she has been sick for the past few months and can't make rent. I speak for my cousin in blood and struggle, Xandra, who works two jobs in Renton at beautiful Renton small businesses, two jobs on top of a photography job, three jobs in total, and cannot make enough to support her family, let alone pursue education. I think of this beautiful moment right now, it is to be a public servant, the responsibility you hold, and the honor and authority that you have to change so many lives. We, the workers of Renton, have brought this to you, and we are begging you for it. We have been grovelling for this because we know this works. The studies show that it works.
I need you to wrap up.
And we're ready, we're ready to pass, we're ready to work with you to pass this. And I hope to have your support. I hope you pass this outright on behalf of working people in Renton. Thank you.
Uh, next is Tawny Kinnabrew.
Good evening. My name is Tawny Kinnabrew. I'm a Renton resident and a local business owner. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to vote yes on raising the Renton minimum wage. As cost of living increases, it is imperative that we raise the minimum wage so that those working here can also afford to live here. Surrounding cities of Sea-Tac and Tequila have raised their minimum wage, and I believe it is time that Renton lives up to its motto of being ahead of the curve and follow suit. My shop, Wildwood Creative, opened in the fall of 2019. Since I opened, I have paid my staff and myself a living wage with annual cost of living wages, raises. I hired my first employee at $15.50 an hour in 2021, and that same employee makes $20 per hour today and will be receiving a raise in January in line with annual inflation rates. Paying my staff a living wage and providing annual raises has never hindered my business or put me at risk of going out of business. It has in fact saved me a lot of time and money. I have extremely low turnover, and I have never had an employee quit to leave for a higher-paying position. My employees have told me personally that being paid fairly, being paid fairly for part-time work can be extremely hard to find and was a big appeal of working for me. By paying a living wage, I have attracted and kept the best workers, saving me exponential time and money on recruiting and training. Paying a living wage is a win-win for employees and employers. I also believe that raising the minimum wage will benefit my business by giving my customers more money to spend with me. As cost of living rises and folks struggle to make ends meet, money for hobbies like sewing are often the first thing to get cut. Raising the minimum wage will not only help our community members be able to afford to live here, it will also circulate more money into our economy as they have more money to spend at our many wonderful businesses. I strongly feel that raising the minimum wage is inevitable, so I say to you, what are you waiting for? Vote yes tonight to raise the minimum wage.
Okay, next up is Monica Mendoza Castrejon.
Good evening, council members. My name is Monica Mendoza Castrejon. I am a law student at Seattle University School of Law, here today to speak in strong support for Resolution 4516. This resolution is personal to me because I was born in Renton, lived in Renton for many years, and still to this day have family in Renton. I am the daughter of Mexican immigrant parents. After they divorced when I was very young, my mother and I moved back to Renton to live in a small basement of a house, the only place we could afford. Both she and I had to work to make it. And at 19 years old, I became the breadwinner, picking up full-time work while being an undergraduate at the University of Washington. Yet, despite working so many hours, it was not enough to make it. I think back, and if we had an increased minimum wage in the city of Renton, we would have not had to struggle so much. We could have had a better life, not just me, but countless other families who were in situations like ours. Now, I understand the opposing side's concerns, especially those of small business owners. After all, before my parents divorced, my hard-working, Mexican immigrant parents opened a first taqueria and Mexican store in Kent back in the late 90s and early 2000s named El Aguila. Although El Aguila is no longer here, I recall memories of the pride that they felt. I know from my parents how hard it is to run a business. That is why I know that increasing the minimum wage is the right thing to do for both employers and employees. In fact, a recent published fact sheet from the Federal Committee on Education in the Workforce shows that increasing the minimum wage will benefit business owners by reducing turnover, increase worker productivity, reduce absenteeism, boost the economy, and of course, benefit workers. Now, council members, I urge you all to do the right thing. Join neighboring Sea-Tac, Seattle, and Tequila to raise a minimum wage, ensure Renton is ahead of the curve, and stand for working families in Renton. Thank you.
Next up is Marcy Palmer.
Okay, well, I walked out of the house without picking up my notes, so this is gonna be real short. Came to talk on a couple of topics. One is the minimum wage initiative. And I would just encourage council to do what's right and put it before the voters. That's always the right thing to do when you have the option. And it's not always the option, but you have that this time. So please put it before the voters in February and allow your Renton voters to chime in, those that will. My second is a concern about, uh, perhaps the city of Renton needs a code of ethics. I looked at Sea-Tac, and they have a great code of ethics that's very strong for elected officials. And I have to tell you, as a resident of Renton, let alone as a former elected official, I'm very concerned when I go out and I hear people talking about my electeds making up rumors, spreading lies to disparage their coworkers. I'm concerned when I hear about bullies going into a small business and intimidating. So I think you need to look, maybe hire a consultant, whatever you need to do. But you guys need to start looking at what is important out here in the real Renton. I wish we could get this kind of enthusiasm for people to stand up to Sound Transit. We still pay 30 million a year to Sound Transit, and what do we have? Nothing. We have nothing. And you, how many of you know, I hope you all know, that the BRT that we were supposed to get has been pushed out four years? We have nothing from Sound Transit. In the time, they're talking about the tens of thousands that the city of Renton will pay to put it on the ballot. The city of Renton is paying millions at the same time towards Sound Transit for nothing. So I just would ask my elected officials to pay attention. We just got out of a campaign season, and I know I am out of time. But I will say that you all have acknowledged that crime is the number one issue. I don't hear any of you talking about that. I don't hear any of you talking about Sound Transit. And I just would like you to start paying attention to the real Renton. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, I would encourage people to not boo, please. That's, that's not acceptable behavior, so hold your boos. Okay, next is Juliana Devil.
Thank you, Mayor Povoni, and thank you, members of the board. I hope my name will get correct someday. It's Juliana Dobble. I am currently serving as the Renton Education Association President. I am the spokesperson for the teachers' union, the schools through which you often compliment and love. I'm gonna tell you real quick what educators need. They need kids that have their basic needs met. They need mental health care providers. They need lower-class sizes. Now, which of those things do you have purview over? I want you to ask yourselves, which of those things can you tonight actually help the teachers who you claim to love help them meet those needs? Why I've been helping this campaign for so long? First of all, workers deserve more. Teenagers these days are helping to pay rent, whether or not your conceptions of minimum wage are matching reality or your own illusions. Kids these days have to work to stay housed in Renton. Also, many of our parents do work minimum wage jobs. When kids don't have parents at home to help them with their homework, we all suffer. When kids have fewer hours a week they need to work, they can do sports and clubs, they can participate in the civic things that we need them to be doing outside of school and outside of working a minimum wage job just to stay housed. Now, I acknowledge that you passing this ordinance tonight is a big ask for some of you because it will not magically erase poverty. Passing this ordinance tonight will not diminish the generational trauma from the exploitation of labor, especially from our BIPOC communities. It will not magically create healthcare for our kids who need it, and it will not create more government. More government bureaucracy is not something we wrote into this initiative. It will give us hope that local government still works. It is the right thing to do, and as someone else said before, it is inevitable. It is up to you if your legacy will be to lead our city towards a future where we can believe in our local electeds, or if you're gonna ask us to spend more thousands of hours of our time.
I need you to wrap up.
Volunteering our time to get the word out to voters of how important it is to turn in their ballot, because we all do better when we all do better. There are facts that business leaders are gonna throw around that are just untrue. Inflation affects the lowest-paid workers the most.
I need you to wrap it up.
We hope you will do the right thing.
Thank you. All right, next up is Ty. Ty Kakoo.
Hi there, Ty Kakoo, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just want to say, as a Renton resident, voter, and a Renton elementary school teacher who is a proud member of the Renton Education Association member, I just want to say that 17,000 people signed the Raise the Wage petition, and despite harder-than-usual ballot requirements, the Raise the Wage successfully made the ballot. Now, this will pass whether it's by council or by voters. As one of my friends said earlier, I do feel there is a fiduciary responsibility of the council to prevent a costly and unnecessary election. So let's help support the community, keep Renton competitive with Seattle, Tukwila, and Sea-Tac. They all raise their wages and are thriving. And finally, as stated earlier, as a Renton educator, I have seen how the rise in prices and housing have forced so many families out of here. We want to keep all these people in Renton for our future. So as we all say, Renton can stay ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Hey, next up is Christina Mann.
All right, hi. I'm Christina. I'm a worker and volunteer in political and community organizing. My friends like to call me the multi-trade miscellaneous organizer because I've worked in many different fields. I've worked in housing, healthcare, public transit, and wages. I've dedicated around 10 months of labor to this campaign, both paid and unpaid capacities. I'm actually a Tukwila resident. I'm a Tukwila resident of six years. As many of you know, the Transit Riders Union Campaign in Tukwila pioneered raising the wages to match current productivity levels and tying them to the CPI, the Consumer Price Index of the area. It was passed with an 82% yes. I was heavily involved in that campaign as well, and I'm here to report back that the world does not end when you raise your wages. Study after study shows that, but me, as your friendly neighborhood Tukwila resident, I thought that I would talk about some of the changes I have seen in my community and how excited we are to be having a $20 minimum wage in January. It's going to be one of the highest in the countries. The wage structures are oriented around business size and revenue. There's a distinction between large corporations and smaller local shops. The larger corporations that we have in Tukwila are paying these high wages, just as they do in other countries around the globe, where many minimum wages are actually closer to $20, $22, $24 of like USD, you know, conversion. That money is starting to circulate, and we're seeing it properly getting thrown around in our community instead of getting hoarded by shareholders and stuff. The small businesses are seeing more customers because of this. They are now able to raise their wages in line with the ordinance as they phase in over the next few years. The smaller businesses are actually opening, not closing. A new nail salon just opened up down the street from me, and they pay like $23 an hour, and two restaurants actually have upgraded into larger facilities. It's really, really cool. The businesses are creating stable hour structures because now they have to offer hours to part-timers. Oh, God, the light's yellow. Part-timers have to get more hours or get bumped up to full-time. Like, it's good. I don't know how to... Mind you, my city also has a really good, like, small business economic development plan, so I definitely feel like your city could probably step up and do some stuff, like more grants, more subsidies, more like cool stuff.
I need you to wrap up your thoughts.
You know, that's cool. Oh, I'm so sorry. Anyway, jobs come from a place of service, so we should be uplifting those who service us and do jobs and things that we don't want to do. The people that make our coffee in the morning, the people that clean up after us. Like, we don't want to do it. We're gonna have someone else do it, so they should be living and thriving and having good wages. Woo!
Thank you. Okay, next up is Michael Westgard.
Good evening, council. Michael Westgard, City Renton resident. You're really missing out the three-minute version, but, sorry. So yeah, so I want to talk about service. So volunteering and helping, we've put in thousands of hours and worked months doing this, but also you've all been elected because you wanted to do service. I sat on endorsement meetings at MLK Labor with the 11th LD Dems, and a few of you went, and you said you believe in those values and you believe in working people. And now you have an opportunity, which very few people get most of the time, to show that you can live those values, and you can present them to the public and show, "I'm doing what I said and what I believe in." And I think that's an incredible opportunity, and I think you should grab it by the tail and pull it in and hug it, because this is an opportunity to lift up working people, show them that you believe that their life can be better, and do something about it. I appreciate your time.
All right, next is Guillermo Sasueta.
Hi, everybody. My name is Guillermo Sasueta. I am a resident in Renton and I am Chair of Raise the Wage Renton. I'm gonna take us back in time a little bit, so please bear with me. In January, our campaign launched a ballot initiative to raise the minimum wage. We issued a press release and notified all seven council members. With the exception of Carmen, no one responded. In March, we reached out once again to discuss the policy implications of this initiative and seek feedback. We met with Ruth Perez, Ed Prince, and the mayor. No one else responded. In late June, we submitted over 12,000 signatures in hopes of qualifying for the November General. Due to a delay in counting signatures and a rejection of over half of our signatures, our petition was rejected, and we thought it was all over. After collecting over 17,000 signatures total for the second submission, King County issued certification, which leads to where we are today. I mention this because throughout this entire time, all this year, council members who portray themselves to be pro-labor, to represent the community, who seek out endorsements from labor unions during their reelection campaigns, had ignored to meet our requests to meet. They had actively watched the signature counts rejected in hopes that this petition would not qualify. Why does this matter? Circumstances have changed. This November General Election saw some of the historically lowest voter turnout in all of King County, and especially in Renton, with less than 30% of registered voters in Renton voting. With full honesty, this is a disgrace. It is a disgrace to democracy. It is a disgrace to each of you who stand up there in your elected positions, those of you who sit quietly without an opinion so long as you get to keep your seats, so long as big business interests are kept as priority and the interests of working people are ignored. You can't ignore us now. Tonight on the council calendar agenda is Resolution Number 4516. Why is this important? Because city staff and the mayor's office would have you believe that the most democratic action to take is to adopt this resolution for placement on the ballot. A question: Why is it that the RCW states clearly that council has the authority to pass the proposed ordinance or call a special election? Why is that an option? The simple fact of the matter is that these systems were not built for working people. I propose that the city council motion to adopt our initiative petition without alteration so that you same pro-labor council members can prove that you represent the interests of working people. Working people do not have time to testify and come down to City Hall. You have a responsibility to your constituents to do the right thing. Thank you.
Next up is Ben Johnson.
G'day, President, Council, Council, and Mayor. My name is Ben Johnson, Renton resident. I really humbly request you go back to five minutes of comment. If somebody shows up here personally, not on Zoom, I can give those guys one minute, but if somebody shows up here, five minutes. They should get their five minutes. It's my dumb opinion. I can't figure out this initiative. It has great intentions. If I was big business, I would actually support this because it starts off with a reasonable bump up of minimum wage, but it keys it to a ridiculously low cost of STPIW, basically. So it's basically every year, it increases by a very small amount, 3.1%. One person testified that's 12% that you got. I myself have given my employees, you know, 15%, and I feel like a heel because that's not enough. You know, my employees get $65,000 a year, but still, it's not enough of an increase. So big business will love this after three or four years when this rate is locked in. Really, microbusinesses like mine don't care about this because we fall under the threshold. There's a band of middle business, around 15 people though, that because there is no carve-out for tips, and think of basically high labor, price-inelastic businesses like coffee shops, mom-and-pop restaurants, recent immigrants starting a business with their family, those people are gonna be hurt, in my opinion. You know, it's hard to do the economic evaluation on this, so be careful on that one. There are no carve-outs for our local hospital residency or internship, and there's no carve-out for in-home care. So if the council, I'm not sure how the process goes, if the council can amend it, I would consider adding those and noodling around with that. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. All right, next up is Marvin Rosetti.
Hi, good evening, council members. I'll make this fast again. I'm Marvin Rosetti. I'm asking that you do not pass the minimum wage as written tonight due to the unforeseen consequences that could occur. I speak to the council to represent the voices in Renton that are not here in the council chamber tonight. I speak for the businesses in our town, the residents that the residents rely on and enjoy. That includes Wajamaya, Premier Meat pies, Rain City Catering, Evergreen Market, McClendon's, King &amp; Buddies, the list of businesses goes on and on and very extensive. It's not just the impact of labor, it's the impact on Renton economy as a whole. Will there be enough of these minimum wage jobs to go around? Will that inflate the cost of goods currently sold? Will there be a raise with the raise of minimum wage? Will the qualifications exceed the income thresholds for state and federal benefits and entitlements, which could kick family leaves off the rolls? We don't know. Where I applaud the efforts of those who believe in the minimum wage, I would not be pressured by those who have an imperfect understanding of the economics, touting that a simple mandated wage increase will completely solve the living affordability in Renton, much less that of King County. It will not. So only debate can fully disclose the ramifications of the ordinance, and I ask that the people decide. Again, I ask you, send the initiative to Raise the Minimum Wage in Renton to the people as originally intended. Thank you.
All right, next up is Diane Dobson.
Good afternoon, Diane Dobson, Renton resident, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding my concerns about the Raise the Wage Initiative in Renton. While I recognize the importance of addressing societal issues, it is with great disappointment that I note the absence of a crucial element in the formulation of this initiative, a meaningful conversation with the businesses and parties directly impacted. In our democratic society, it is disheartening to witness an initiative come forward without the inclusion of those who will bear the brunt of its consequences. The lack of dialogue with local businesses, both large and small, is a missed opportunity to find collaborative solutions that benefit the entire community. While acknowledging the existence of societal issues that demand our attention, we must question the efficacy of the approach taken by the current initiative. Placing the burden to fix societal issues solely on the back of business is a short-sighted strategy. It risks hampering the variantities that are vital for economic growth and employment opportunities in our community. Contrary to what is represented tonight and through this initiative, the other cities haven't raised the wage with the same approach. City of Seattle had a Raise the Wage 12-year rollout for businesses under 500 and included tips and benefits in consideration. City of Sea-Tac was specific to hospitality, transportation, and public-facing food and beverage only, intended for tourism and airport, and the city of Tukwila hasn't yet implemented the same. Misrepresented safeguard being touted for small businesses with fewer than 15 employees, despite being labeled as exempt, these businesses will still feel direct impact on their wages and competitive approach. The critical oversight is the lack of consideration for tips and benefits received by employees, ignoring these elements, and the wage structure overlooks a significant portion of compensation and fails to capture the full picture of employees' financial well-being. In conclusion, as we engage in democratic process, it's crucial to value differing beliefs and opinions. Residents and business owners should be able to express dissenting opinions without fear of bullying or threats from anyone, especially council members and elected officials. Open and respectful dialogue is essential to finding the best solutions for our community. Thank you for your time and consideration and hope we can work together to find collaborative solutions that address societal issues without unduly burdening our businesses and vulnerable members of our community.
Thank you. Next up is Gabrielle Jones.
Hello, council members, Mr. Mayor. I am Gabriel Jones. I'm a member of the Equity Commission. I met many of you just a few minutes ago, but I am here today as an educator and as a trans person myself. I'm here to actually speak out against ballot initiative 2081, the so-called Parental Notification Act. This act would require that, the basic idea behind it is the idea that parents should be notified about everything about their children, which on its, you know, basic idea sounds great. The issue with it, though, is the things that the act are specifically asking for, parents be notified from schools. This includes that it would require teachers and staff members to share students' records of things said during mental health counseling, any medical treatment received at school health clinics, the student's family beliefs, morality, religious beliefs, or political affiliation, and a child's sexuality and gender identity. This at best inhibits, it really harms a child's ability to grow as an individual, and at worst gives children a way that they could possibly be abused or harmed or kicked out of their housing. And this is an initiative that I see pressed through Renton at grocery stores, and this initiative trying to be passed around there. I speak out as a teacher here who has many trans students, a trans person myself, a trans person myself who sees this and realizes that outing a child to their family members may not be safe for them and may put them in serious direct harm. Children need the ability to grow and find themselves, figure out who they are, and if they do not have a good support system, they will not have that. And forcing teachers to get involved in this is not helpful and can harm not only teachers, but so many people. This is not right, and I absolutely speak out against it, and I ask council to do the same. Thank you.
Next up is Skylar Schmidt.
Good evening, council. My name is Skylar Schmidt, and I am the Local Government Affairs Manager for Washington Hospitality Association, representing restaurants and hotels across Renton, many of which, as small business owners, could not be here in person tonight to share their concerns with you. Regarding Initiative 2302, which will be put forth, or would put forth a measure on the February 2024 ballot to raise the wage in Renton, this initiative would have a far-reaching impact and implication to small businesses in Renton. Due to the tremendous reach this will have, we ask you to give the voting public the opportunity to weigh in on this measure. Across our region, cities and counties have considered raising the minimum wage. The initiative language in front of you this evening is nearly the same as legislation that is on pause in other jurisdictions due to problems such as high cost of enforcement to the city, redundant and costly certification processes annually, no recognition of total compensation, and pitting our smallest and largest businesses against each other. Please take this into consideration and do not pass this legislation tonight. We, as a small business community, want to create an environment where our employees and customers thrive. We understand that we live in an expensive region, but with record inflation and small businesses still recovering from the pandemic, this initiative may create unintended consequences for our beloved Renton community. We believe legislating by ballot initiative will create unintended consequences. We hope that you as council will not endorse this initiative and instead work with local business owners to address the affordability crisis in our community. Please send this initiative to the ballot in February, and at a future meeting, consider passing a resolution in opposition of this initiative. Thank you.
This might be, is there Sean Conway? I think this was mistakenly signed in. Braden McSweeney? I think they were here for the presentation. All right. Dee McSweeney. All right, next up is Shannon. I think it's Jax. Nope, okay. Oh, that was all for the McSweeney. Alice Lockridge?
Hi, I'm Alice Lockridge. I live in Renton. I'm a former company owner and a voter. And since one topic has been covered, I want to skip my third point, and I'm here to speak on two other topics, too. My first concern is that this body is considering the redistribution of 2.6 million of the 3.6 million ARPA funds. I'm with those that oppose this money's reshuffle. I believe the original needs have not been met and that the total amount should be focused to do what was originally planned for. I looked up the definition, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was given by the federal government to, quote, "provide direct economic assistance to American workers, families, and small businesses." That need in our community is still great. Put those funds to work in the way they were intended. Don't move them. My second concern is the knowledge that this council intends to defund or reorganize and weaken the essential department known as the Equity Housing and Human Services Department. I have worked most of my professional career helping cities ensure there is equity in jobs, training, and housing in our communities. That need has never been greater. Now is not the time to diminish the work of these important issues. I stand firmly with those in this voter base that support the continuation of full funding of this department. In 1999, the marketing company Hamilton &amp; Sanderson had a three-year contract for $600,000 to improve the image of the city of Renton. They worked with the city, the chamber, and the Renton reporter to cause Renton to be thought of as above, excuse me, ahead of the curve. That phrase is usually depicting an entity that is forward-thinking and early in adopting things that are about to become popular.
I need you to wrap up your thoughts.
My concerns are that we are not looking forward, and I hope the council will reconsider their positions on these issues.
Okay, and the next name, I cannot read the first name, but the last name is Slaughter? Okay.
Good evening, council members, council president and mayor. My name is Ange Nae Slaughter. I am a resident of Renton, business owner, and community advocate. I'm commenting today against the reorganizing or dismantling slash dissolving of the Equity Housing and Human Services Department and the reallocation of the $2.6 million coming from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. Funds currently proposed are for the general fund. We should be allocating these funds to small businesses in the form of grants, human services and housing needs, and anything that is due to COVID pandemic and recovery as the funds were originally intended. Currently, the $2.6 million that was reserved for future consideration, some of it being for the Equity Housing and Human Services Department pending the community needs assessment, is instead, the city is deciding to dissolve the department prior to the result of the assessment and reallocating the funds elsewhere. $1 million aside for sidewalks, $300,000 to $400,000 a citywide cleanup, and $400,000 to human services for who knows how. At one point, the council understood that equity work required a team, not just one equity manager under HR. Additionally, $1.5 million was already spent to establish the Equity Housing and Human Services Department, which passed through this city council, because at one point, again, you guys understood, it took more than just one person to do equity work. By dissolving the Equity Housing and Human Services Department, the council will be misusing the initial $1.5 million spent due to not maintaining a department long enough to see a return on that initial investment. Lastly, of the $600,000 allocated to small businesses from the ARPA funds, we know only 40 out of 70 businesses applied were actually issued grants. This results in a remaining of $292,000. In closing, the loss of the initial investment of $1.5 million, plus the $2.6 unspent, and the $292,000 that were also unspent, leaves a total of $4.3 million federal dollars misused by the council, which is simply irresponsible, unjust to your constituents and to the residents of the city of Renton. So if this council wants to show the community that you are not fiscally irresponsible and do not misuse federal funds, then show us by voting against the reorganizing of the Equity Housing Human Services Department and reallocating the remaining $2.6 million from the original fund. Thank you.
All right, that's everybody that was signed up, but we do have some people that are virtual and are voice in the sky will talk to us.
Thank you, mayor and council members. My name is Nadja Krenzler. I'm a graduate of high school. I am the directing attorney of the Tenant Law Center, and I am the board president of Purpose, Dignity, and Action. We oversee lead and co-lead, and we are a response to helping our neighbors in crisis. Please keep the Equity Housing and Human Services Departments. Renton residents need more than an equity manager to do the city's important work. Fully fund EHS and keep the $2.76 million grant money to small businesses, housing, and human services. Rent needs the Equity Housing and Human Services Department. Small business owners need these grants, and they need the technical assistance that's provided by the staff that comes with the department. Rent must take its fair share towards addressing the housing crisis that Renton residents are experiencing, both in homeownership, specifically for black renters, for black people who want to own homes or want to stay in their homes, and also renters. Eviction prevention resources for renters is far cheaper for rent municipalities than is creating tent cities, developing vacant lots into tiny homes. Keep people in the houses that they're already in. And that goes to the point, raise the minimum wage. Stay in the city. Help them be part of the revitalization post the pandemic. This is your opportunity to be bold and courageous. And I'm here tonight, and I am begging you, I am pleading with you to do the right thing. I am asking you to stay true to your commitment to follow the federal guidelines, to do better than most, and spend the $2.5 million the way it was originally intended, and be on the right foot in history, and help Renton be better. You can do better.
Next person is Alex Jones. However, I don't see her.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Capri Tsang. I'm one of the core organizers for Raise the Wage and co-chair of the co-chairment of the State Chapter. It's what's all working with me. I've spent countless hours helping support our signature gathering efforts to qualify for ballot. You know, going all the way back to mid-January and as late as November, we have been gathering and gathering and gathering. We gathered 17,000 raw signatures, knocked up 50,000 doors, and talked to tens of thousands of voters, taping the city with 60,000 registered voters. You know, we've gathered over 10,000 that are from registered Renton voters, and that just goes to show that there's incredible unprecedented public support for this. We worked tirelessly with King County elections to submit twice to qualify. Significant resources, time, money, and energy went into a rigorous and thorough signature validation process. It's likely held the election already. There is no need to hold another second election. There is clearly broad support for this. We can do this the easy way and pass it today, or we can do it the other way, the hard way, and it will get passed nonetheless. After knocking on so many doors myself and having spoken to hundreds of voters, it is clear that raising the wage is an issue with broad support with a coalition that is multiracial, multigenerational, and that's support amongst almost any demographic you can think of amongst working-class folks. And that's because it's just common sense that everyone deserves a working paycheck. The struggles of working paycheck to paycheck, not being able to afford housing, these are struggles that anyone can relate to and empathize with. Everyone understands that we all deserve a right to live with dignity, and that means earning a wage, I think. And that's why city council must pass the initiative to raise the minimum wage today. I know that the coalition we build won't forget which council members stood on the side of working-class folks and wished it. Thank you for your time.
Next person signed up is Robert Membert. However, I don't see Robert to have to sign in tonight. Our next person is Shani Wheeler James. Shani, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council members. For the record, my name is Shani Wheeler James. She heard from now, and I am the deputy ESCF of the local labor. I represent 150 labor unions across King County and more than 14,000 union households in the city of Renton. I am before you today to voice my support for the proposed minimum wage ordinance. This advocacy is not just about dollars and cents. It's about recognizing the tangible effect it has, particularly on workers of color. The numbers speak volumes. These policies have reduced wage gap by substantial amounts, up to 60% in some industries. We know higher-income working families drive local business, spur economic growth, and invest in crucial services fueling the middle-class expansion. Our foundational belief is that those who contribute to the creation of wealth should also share its benefits. Preparing for today made me think of my first minimum wage job at Blockbuster Video. I liked the little sea, my mind filled with a drink of independence, shopping for clothes at Wet Seal, and excitement of owning my first car. But little did I know that life had a different script written for me. My newly earned pocket money became the only source of income for my family. With the minimum wage at that time at a meter five fifteen an hour, I was forced to get a second job to maintain a row of workers. Thus, I could now myself navigate the train of adults while still tethered to the hallways of high school. And as have we heard tonight, my story unfortunately is far from rare. Countless workers in our community still wrestle with comparable realizations, and what really impacts me is the all that is this hurting that the realization of a term of reality could have existed, and so you have the opportunity to do that right here in Renton. And as stewards of this city, I urge you to adopt the initiative right after the council votes and avoid a special election that's expensive and influenced by certain privileges. But rather, let's prioritize racial equity considerations by embracing the chance to make a difference now. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Catherine Hook. However, I don't see Catherine in tonight. Our next person is Erin McNeil. Erin, go ahead.
Hi, we are Jeff and Erin McNeil, and we are the owners of the Renton Grocery Co., thanks.
I don't think Jeff's mic is working too well. I think he started talking.
Closer to the mic.
Yes.
We're having difficulty hearing you. I think you need to speak closer into your microphone.
I'm not sure if I can hear John.
I think we can hear Ms. McNeil.
Hi. We were just saying that our business model is so much different than every other small business in the city of Renton, and so it might get everybody into one proposal seems unfair to the business community as a whole. Renton prides itself on diversity of everything, and yet, we're being lumped together as one entity.
Ten, less than.
Nope, nope.
We can't hear Mr. McNeil. Yeah, Mr. McNeil and Ms. McNeil, I believe you can send your comments to Renton or to cityclerk@rentonwa.gov.
I don't think we can. Unfortunately.
The next person we have is Kevin Hayes. Kevin, go ahead.
Evan, you need to add mute.
Thank you. Hello, mayor. Hello, council president and council. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Kevin Hayes. I'm a resident of Maple Valley and an employee in Renton. I'm here to speak about the Raise the Wage Initiative. I've been a baseball coach in Renton since 2009, coaching ages 15 to 18. I have 32 years of experience in department accounting, bookkeeping services for small business ranging from 2 to 100 employees. This ordinance eliminates the ability to pay a training wage in Renton. One very important reason to have a training wage is for the high school student entering the workforce for the first time, which I am very familiar with, having watched this many times. The ability to gain employment at age 16 to 18 and be close to home is vital in the development of skills needed to advance further in the workforce as they get older. As a coach, my job is to improve the skills of my players to the point where they can get to see the field and play and eventually become a starter. Then, if they choose to continue to work hard and develop, they give themselves an opportunity to play in college and advance even further. The workforce is no different. A new person to the workforce has taught basic skills to do a job. As they learn and work hard, they are given more job duties and responsibility, which usually turns into more money through a raise. Then, as they grow to the top of this type of position and want to make more money, they have the ability... For 32 years, I have been working with businesses to control costs and efficiently run their business. None, I repeat, none of those businesses would hire a new employee without experience at a wage they can hire someone with experience. It makes no sense. I urge the council to vote no tonight on approving this initiative as written. I also urge the voters of Renton to vote no in February and above the entire community of Renton to come together and plan a sensible and fair initiative for all. Thank you for your time.
The last second on that is Arvin Montrovi. Arvin, go ahead.
Hi, Council. My name is Arvin Montrovi with the Transgender Riders Union. Thank you for hearing us today, not the other wonderful people we have tonight. We led the campaign to raise the wage in Toquilla last year, and the workers next door, often at the same employers, are earning a few bucks more an hour. We stopped keeping up with their bills. It was common sense to catch up with the neighboring cities of Sea-Tac and Seattle last year in Toquilla, and it's still common sense now here in Patrion. And the arguments against the minimum wage are pretty old at this point. They're about a decade old, and so far, the cities that have raised their minimum wage, workers are getting more money, and things are going fine. And many employers are already paying those salaries in those places, too. Minimum wage is popular. I'm confident it will pass in Renton, and we'd be willing to support this campaign and make sure it does. It passes over 80% of the vote in Toquilla, and I've talked to enough Renton voters to know that they're not that different from two miles down the road. So it's not about whether or not it will pass. The reason why we want you to pass this tonight is because there are important details to get right regarding franchise coverage, which is all out of the law, finding out the phase in detail, the access to hours piece in there. And we worked at the city of Toquilla for a couple months on getting those rules out, and then also making sure workers and employers knew about that. Also took a lot of life. There were workers who we did outreach to the day of implementation, July 1st, who didn't know they were getting a raise, and we had to help some workers get their money back, and we knew that there were some violations. And so I just encourage you to pass it now so that you can get started on that process, start doing the outreach, start doing that workmaking, and make sure our workers give the heads up and employers give the heads up without having to scramble last minute, because I am confident this will pass. So I do encourage the council to pass it outright tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil?
I have one piece, of course.
Okay, thank you.
I received a letter today signed by 104 individuals supporting council's option to adopt the ordinance that was submitted with the petition. Some of those included our Senator Housegawa, Representative Hackney in Byrdquist, and Dr. Linda Smith from Renton, among others. Council and the mayor's office have received copies of the letters from all the individuals. This and several other letters supporting and opposing the issue will be available as submitted in the city's digital records library by 5:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, December 5th. Please visit rentonwa.gov/cityclerk to find the link to the city's digital record library. Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Okay, we're going to carry on with business now. Next up is the consent agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any that council would like pulled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has one report to present.
Hey, Utilities Committee, committee report, Amendment Number 9 to Contract 17050 with RH2 Engineering Incorporated for the Lift Station at Forest Main Rehabilitation Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number 9 to Contract 17050 with RH2 Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $241,120 for the Lift Station at Forest Main Rehabilitation Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberson.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Utility Committee Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Councilmember Alberson, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The final report for the Transportation Committee is regarding a temporary full-street closure of a portion of Sunset Lane Northeast. The Transportation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the extension of a temporary full-street closure of Sunset Lane Northeast, aka Jefferson Avenue Northeast, for 850-foot portion between Northeast 10th Street and Harrington Place Northeast from October 4th, 2023 to September 1st, 2024, to allow for the continued construction of the Solero Master Site Plan project, the former Highland Shopping Center. The Committee for the Recom- recommends the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is to assign by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberson.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberson, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we are on to legislation. We have two resolutions for adopt.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, did I miss you?
Nope, you did not.
Oh, okay.
Well, you did, but there was no unfinished business. I already said unfinished business, but I think in lieu of all the public comments and correspondence that we've received over the last couple of weeks, I would like to move to adopt the ordinance proposed by Initiative Measure 2302 in the form that it was attached to the initiative without alteration and without sending the initiative to a public vote.
Okay, nod here in a second. We are going to move on. Yes.
I would like to second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Perez, that um, I don't know.
Saying for the purpose of discussion.
The purpose of discussion, yes. Okay, I open the floor to you, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. We have seen this campaign go throughout the motions for the last year. I have also been out and talking to residents. They have received over 17,000 signatures, and not all of them were valid Renton residents. We understand that. However, with the low turnout we saw in this last election season, some of the lowest turnout we have seen, people are burnt out, the trust has been lost, and we need to be able to restore that trust. I'm confident that if we do send this to a ballot, it will likely be passed. However, we were elected to do work, and when I look back at the census information that was given a year ago, less than a year ago, the citywide extremely low income and low income has increased since 2010 from 12% to 15% and 10% to 14%. We've seen increases in the poverty rates amongst our Black and Hispanic communities, and 21% of the Renton community per these, per the poverty rates that were presented through the census data, two times are below that poverty line, 8% are below that poverty line. Now, we understand that maybe only 6,000 workers live and work in Renton. However, 45,000 have to commute out of Renton in order to find affordable work, livable wages. We have to do this to stay competitive. This is something for our small businesses. And speaking of our small businesses, when a survey was done back in June, 48% said that they would not be negatively impacted by this initiative. I've also spoken to small businesses. Small businesses have said that they support this initiative. Many say they actually already pay that livable wage. We are the fourth-largest city in King County. I've heard time and time again, we have to stay ahead of the curve. I want to listen to the people that have been speaking tonight, the real Renton that I truly respect and admire, because as someone who was born and raised in Renton, I've seen the tides turn, I've seen the demographics change, and we have to be open to that change. And so I would really love a whole hard conversation, because maybe the minimum wage isn't enough, but it's something, and it's something that we can do for the workers of Renton, the most marginalized, those who may not be able to show up and give public comment. But I really respect those who have been able to organize to do so, because it's how you organize like this to get us to pay attention. So thank you regardless of how this goes tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberson.
Personally, I think would be highly premature and incredibly irresponsible for council to approve this ordinance instead of letting it go to a vote. I have a few reasons why. Councilmember Rivera actually referred to the June 26th committee of the whole meeting where they looked at the results of the worker wages study that was done, and it showed that approximately 65,000 workers were in Renton jobs. But 59,000 of them did not, were not Renton residents, leaving only, as Councilmember Rivera indicated, 6,000 workers who actually live in Renton. That represents about 10%, actually 9.2 to be relatively exact, of the Renton population. Now, if you look at that data a little bit further, only 33%, 33.5 of those jobs already paid less than $19.23 an hour. And simple extrapolation pretty much says that of the 6,000 workers who live in Renton, only 33.5% are currently making less than $19 an hour. That equates to about 2,000 people. That's about 1.9% of the Renton population making the unskilled wage that supposedly is so desperately needed. If you do the math, I welcome anybody to do it. That's the first factor that tells me the Raise the Wage organization is trying to create a large-scale problem where one arguably does not exist. I believe arguably, the numbers don't lie, 1.9%. Now, we'll go a little bit further. When you look at the breakdown of those jobs, 34% of under $19 an hour were under the age of 29. 44.6% between 30 and 54, 21.4% 55 and older. Now, I don't think it's a stretch to think that 25% of those, about 25% of those under 29 were teenagers. And on the other end, over 55, I think it's fair to say maybe 10 to 15% of those over 55, let's say retirees back in the workforce looking to make ends meet, to stay busy whatever it is. When you look at the numbers, it's not a stretch to think that 35 to 40% are not truly looking for a livable wage. So if I take those out, if you take those out, you're actually talking about 1.2% of the population that this is seeking to affect in Renton, of Renton residents. Now, for me, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense, given the other unintended consequences that come to, that come into play. Basically, we're going to impact about 1.2%. Everybody else goes back, leaves Renton, goes home elsewhere. Now, when you throw in what has been said about the businesses and the impact there, yeah, the super-large businesses, maybe they won't hurt, super-small businesses, maybe not, but Ben Johnson hit those middle businesses, A, taking the discretion out of the business owner of, of, of bring, of calling the shots on if they need an extra part-time worker, now I have to elevate to a full-time worker. For anybody who's running a business, that's not, that's not an inconsequential expense, and that is an expense that could take a business out of business or at least have them struggle. I don't think that's personally fair. Now, personally, when you look at businesses that are going to decide, do I come to Renton with these, these, all these parameters other than the unskilled wage increase? Do I come to Renton for this, or do I go someplace else? As we're trying to develop our economic development environment and bring businesses, you give one reason for a business to go someplace else, to start someplace else, when they can't meet all those things. This is, this is one of the other reasons why I think if we leave it to the people, that's fair. If they voted in, that's fair. But I don't know if the people actually are as well-informed as they should. One of the things I'm pretty sure the people aren't informed about is the cost to the city. No one's talked about that, but at that same committee of the whole meeting, it was, it was stated the city would have to hire at least five full-time employees at a cost of $1 to $2 million. Now, everybody out here, quite a few, oh, I'm on camera, thank you, have, have, have stated that it would be irresponsible for the council to spend $80,000 or so on a special election, but passing this outright now means $1 to $2 million into perpetuity that the city would have to find somewhere in the budget. Where's that going to come from? Either from taking away from other programs, police funding, human services, parks and rec, I don't know, or likely tax increases. And I wonder if all of the people who signed the petitions, if they would, if they knew that, well, this may increase your taxes, you know, the city's not just going to manufacture money. And that is another reason why I think it needs to go to the voting public and well-informed. And my final reason is this, and this is the one thing that, that really, really, I won't say disturb, disturbs me about this whole thing. And I'm going to have to be the one, I'm going to have to be the person, I'm going to have to be the little boy who says the emperor has on no clothes. Fact of the matter is, the minimum wage, the unskilled wage, was not originally designed to be a living wage. It was not designed to be a living wage. You can look it up. Now, over recent years, the two terms have become synonymous, and they are not. But when you think about what is being done here, we're trying to, we're trying to keep, make people a little more comfortable in this, this station, but not necessarily move them to a different, a different place. And one thing I have not heard anybody, anybody in this argument say or fight for, and I'm disappointed, no one is fighting for the city to create a program or programs that will help upscale the same individuals that they're trying to help. No one has talked about the Renton Promise. Now, we received 104 emails about this, vote yes, but I doubt that one email went to any of these people that said, hey, do you know about the Renton Promise? Do you know that if you graduated, you had a child who graduated from a Renton school, they can go to two years at RTC for free, no matter what the, what their economic situation is? The Washington College Grant Program, if you look that up, families under $70,000 can have college tuition or job training or career training or apprenticeships. I don't know if any mailing campaign went out about that. The fact of the matter is, you're As we're trying to develop our economic development environment and bring businesses, you give one reason for a business to go someplace else, to start someplace else when they can't meet all those things. This is, this is one of the other reasons why I think if we leave it to the people, that's fair. If they voted in, that's fair. But I don't know if the people actually are as well-informed as they should. One of the things I'm pretty sure the people aren't informed about is the cost to the city. No one's talked about that, but at that same committee of the whole meeting, it was stated the city would have to hire at least five full-time employees at a cost of $1 to $2 million. Now, everybody out here, quite a few, oh, I'm on camera, thank you, have, have stated that it would be irresponsible for the council to spend $80,000 or so on a special election. But passing this outright now means $1 to $2 million into perpetuity that the city would have to find somewhere in the budget. Where's that gonna come from? Either from taking away from other programs, police funding, human services, parks and rec, I don't know, or likely tax increases. And I wonder if all of the people who signed the petitions, if they knew that, well, this may increase your taxes. You know, the city's not just gonna manufacture money. And that is another reason why I think it needs to go to the voting public and well-informed. And my final reason is this, and this is the one thing that, that really, really, I won't say disturbs, disturbs me about this whole thing. And I'm gonna have to be the one, I'm gonna have to be the person, I'm gonna have to be the little boy who says the emperor has on no clothes. Fact of the matter is, the minimum wage, the unskilled wage, was not originally designed to be a living wage. It was not designed to be a living wage. You can look it up. Now, over recent years, the two terms have become synonymous, and they are not. But when you think about what is being done here, we're trying to, we're trying to keep, make people a little more comfortable in this station, but not necessarily move them to a different, a different place. And one thing I have not heard anybody, anybody in this argument say or fight for, and I'm disappointed, no one is fighting for the city to create a program or programs that will help upscale the same individuals that they're trying to help. No one has talked about the Renton promise. Now, we received 104 emails about this, vote yes. But I doubt that one email went to any of these people that said, hey, do you know about the Renton promise? Do you know that if you graduated, you had a child who graduated from a Renton school, they can go to two years at RTC for free, no matter what the, what their economic situation is? The Washington College Grant Program. If you look that up, families under $70,000 can have college tuition or job training or career training or apprenticeships. I don't know if any mailing campaign went out about that. The fact of the matter is, you're not, it's not gonna be popular, but chances are you're not really supposed to raise a family on minimum wage. It's hard, it happens, but that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about, and I'm not trying to be cold, what I'm trying to say is, where is your focus? Is your focus on actually focusing on helping those individuals gain skills to get a better job? Because it feels like you're trying to lower the bar instead of teaching them or encouraging them to jump higher. And it feels like you're throwing crumbs to make them comfortable at their station in life. Increasing the unskilled wage is not gonna catapult them to a different life. It's gonna make it slightly more comfortable to live paycheck to paycheck. That is why I don't think it's, why I strongly oppose us passing this through and not leaving it to a well-informed voting public. If they make that decision, fair enough. But that's what I have to say.
Okay. Kim, Councilmember Van, did you have a...
Well, I thought there was handbait somewhere there.
I was referring to you, Councilmember Von.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Well, I don't really do math, that's why I'm an attorney. And I don't think that the numbers inflated. I think there's data into that. My concern with this, as I mentioned to folks throughout this journey since March, is the written document itself, the ordinance itself. And as a former child refugee, as someone who grew up in poverty, all the things that I've gone through, I identify with the people speaking and those who are not even in the room. And as much as we talk about equity and the work that we've done here in Renton, we need to do more. Here, we're also talking about defunding the department. But getting back to the raise the wage, there are issues in terms of the, uh, the ordinance itself. And as I, as an attorney and is looking at this, I worry on a lot of issues in enforcement and implementation. That's one point. The reference to Tukwila, well, City of Renton is different than Tukwila in our demographics and businesses, in small businesses, mid-side businesses, the small mom-pop shops. And I would agree with you, Councilmember Alberston, in terms of the middle businesses, folks like Grocery Outlet, folks like your Common Grounds and other folks that are in between that. I am at a standstill in terms of how to go about with this, because for me is, it's $80,000 or $100,000, but that's an investment in our community is what I see. And when I don't have the answer, when I've tried my hardest to connect a few councilmembers to businesses and residents and try to go about where it costs, where it's councilmatic, where we're actually gonna look at it, that it reflects the City of Renton and our issues and our needs, we're not doing that. And so with my fiduciary duty to the constituents, to everyone, not just one segment of society, I think it's best for me at this point to ask the voters, our community again, what do you want? And I think that's very important. So that's why I would...
Anything else? Yep?
I'll jump in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm at the risk of giving an opinion that maybe would be the most unpopular with every single person in this room. I support this initiative. I think Renton needs a raise in the wage. I think that those workers that Councilmember Alberston was talking about who want to skill up, you know, they need a way to pay the bills while they're going and attending class. And if they can't afford to do that, they make a choice sometimes between attending class and bettering themselves and being able to earn a living wage, because if they're, it's hard to juggle time as a full-time student and work at the same time. So I don't think it's an easy choice for everyone. So I want to create a path that we give everyone that opportunity. I think if you look at inflation, you can see very clearly, we have not kept up with the cost of living in the area. And so the bottom workers do need a raise, absolutely. I'm also hearing from our business community, and I know they've struggled and hurt through some of this too. I know some businesses are supportive. I'd like to get to the point where we see a majority of Renton businesses saying, yes, I want to value our workers. I love hearing from businesses that say, I pay a competitive wage. I think we're honestly giving the businesses that are paying less a competitive advantage by doing that. And I don't think that's right either. That said, I don't know that the right answer here is for me to say, we should adopt this here and outright. It got put forward through a process. I have, I share the confidence, I think of some of the backers of the initiative, that it would be adopted. I think it's challenging to sit here and make that decision that is granted by the RCW, but I think was really envisioned for those cases where there is really a lack of opposition, where there isn't, where it's an easy thing to agree with, where we can, oh yeah, we can save $80,000 and just do this thing, because nobody objects to it. I think it's not a bad thing to let the people have a say on this. I'm open to being, you know, change my mind, if you will. But this is where I arrived coming in today. This is what I said throughout my campaign for reelection. I think it doesn't hurt to give people a choice to see. And I think contrary to Councilmember Alberston, with all due respect, when people see the good it can cause and see the disparity, I think it will pass. And so I hope the informed voter would choose, should it go to the ballot, to vote yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Thank you so much. This has been an interesting process all the way around. And I will say this, as I think about this, and I've heard a lot of people mention CTEC and Tukwila in their comments. The common element in that is that they both went to an election. They both went to the people. They both went to a ballot. They both had a debate amongst the residents about what they wanted to do to chart their future. Especially Tukwila, where it happened last year. I'm not understanding or recognizing why we wouldn't put this on a ballot so that the residents, even though they entrust us, there are times that we have sent several things to the ballot because we wanted to hear from our residents. We've sent fireworks to the ballot. And listen, I'm not comparing and saying one thing's more important than the other. But I'm saying we've sent fireworks, we've sent libraries, we've sent annexations, we've sent, if we were gonna let certain parts of the city to a ballot and had a robust discussion about that as residents. That's what I think needs to happen with this as well. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
So as I've mentioned to several of you in our conversations, I've never been against a living wage. It's not about that for me. What it is about, what it is about is the onerousness of the reporting and the requirements. And I have always said that if Renton were to do something like this council-matically, we would write a very different initiative. And, and that the model that is being presented to us just simply doesn't work for Renton and our businesses. So I firmly believe that the voters have a voice in this. And I believe that that is actually what our fiduciary responsibility is, is to seek input from all of the voters. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. I may say one more thing to address. I absolutely hear the concerns on the low number of Renton residents who may actually be impacted by this. The fiduciary investment in hearing from the voters, I agree with a lot of what's been said here. I'm also going to then bring up the fact that this is a regional issue. What happens in Burien, what happens in Seattle, what happens in Tukwila impacts Renton. As what happens in Renton impacts the rest of these neighborhoods, we can no longer operate in silos, thinking that we can only work with Renton residents and people who pay a BNO tax and sales taxes in Renton. I'm curious, my colleagues, we have so many workers that would like to see an increase. I mean, I know we got a lot of emails that were just copy and paste, but if you read through some of them, some of them were very unique. One from a young girl who has to commute and provide for her family, another one from a man who has to commute out of Renton to get a livable wage. And I'm wondering, do these workers have the same voice and value as our business owners? And that's something I'm not entirely sure of, because this is something that's going to pass. And we can put it to the voters, and that's gonna be great. I'm concerned, though, about the July 1st start date, knocking up against 180-day prep date, not being properly prepared as an administration. As we're seeing these other issues in Tukwila, let's get prepared. And if businesses are concerned, let's work with them. Let's reallocate those ARPA funds for our small businesses, for a small business grant. And then let's work with our small businesses for an easy transition. Let's take these extra two and a half months to do that. Because we can trust that that's gonna, that our voters are gonna vote for this. We know our voters. They're gonna vote for this, not the loud minority that has gone past.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
To Councilmember Rivera's comments, whenever I hear, well, Tukwila did this, and CTEC did this, and Seattle did it, to Councilmember O'Halloran's point, they did something different. I'm always reminded of my mother when I used to say my friends do it, and she'd say, well, if your friends played on the freeway, would you wanna do that too? And I'm not trying to be facetious. What I'm trying to say is, the point she's trying to make is, just because others do it doesn't mean that you do it exactly the same. And I'm strongly behind Councilmember O'Halloran's viewpoint that this is not the way to go. And that's why I say we'd be highly irresponsible as a council to pass this. Two months, once again, we learn lessons, but two months is not gonna necessarily make it all hunky-dory and everything is euphoria come the time, if it votes. I mean, if it passes. We can say we know the voters are gonna do that. We don't know that. I never know what a fully informed voting public will do. I don't know. And so to presume that, I think, is very, very egocentric on the council's part to make that decision. And so I will add that, add that thought to it. I think it just flat out needs to go to the voting public. If they go for it, then so be it. Whether it be higher prices for businesses that they pay, okay. Whether it be higher taxes, whether we don't do much to move the 1.2%, move the needle, if they choose that, that's fair. It's not our decision to make. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One additional point I wanted to raise, just at the risk of giving another unpopular opinion. This is, as it was stated, a regional issue. And I think regardless of what we do here tonight, I think a solution from Olympia that addressed our region, the high costs in King County, would be much more meaningful. So I do want to turn it back on those legislators who signed that letter asking us to fix this and ask them to consider adopting and fixing the state solution that has not kept up. I think both paths can be attempted at the same time. Certainly, the legislative session, you know, is a short session this year. If they could pass that, that would happen around the same time as an election. The implementation date of July 1 would be about the same. So I would even call and say we should put it on our state legislative agenda then and be serious about it.
Yes, Councilmember.
I wanted to go moment, but then I'm not sure if Councilmember Perez says her hands up or not. Okay. I don't wanna skip over, since we're going second round. Yeah, I think in terms of the initiative, like I said, as is, as is written. And I have issues as an attorney as how it's written. And so that's why I'm at a point where I would seek to the voters for their decision, and it's their right to do so.
Everybody, we've hashed this out. Jason, you wanna repeat back what the...
Yes. So the motion was to adopt the ordinance proposed by Initiative Measure 2302 in the form that it was attached to the initiative without alteration and without sending the initiative to a public vote. It was moved by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Perez.
All right, everybody understand what the motion is on the floor. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion does not pass. And now we are going to move on to legislation. There are two resolutions for adoption, for ordinance for first reading and two for final reading.
I'm going to read the resolution regarding the Sunset Lane closure that was first on the agenda. So Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the extension of the temporary full road closure of Sunset Lane Northeast, AKA Jefferson Avenue Northeast, between Northeast 10th Street and Harrington Place Northeast for the construction of the Solera Master Site Plant Project, former Highland Shopping Center for a period not to exceed 11 calendar months.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The resolution is regarding the placement of Initiative Measure 2302 on the ballot. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, calling for a special election to be held February 13, 2024, to place before the qualified electors of the city the proposition of whether an ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees should be adopted.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second. Moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any last discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Next, the next piece of legislation is ordinance number 6126. This is concerning docket 226 home occupation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final...
I'm sorry, I didn't read it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know.
I had a noise.
An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 44010-L, 48070-D, 48080-G, and 48090-C1, 48120-C, 48120-D8, and 4909-A through F, 49100.J, amending section 4118 of the Renton Municipal Code, repealing and replacing subsection 4990G of the Renton Municipal Code, adding new subsection 4990H to the Renton Municipal Code, amending home occupation regulations, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
All right.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next ordinance is regarding docket 229, eating-drinking establishments. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4206-I, 42080-A19, 42080-A26, 42080-A27, 42080-A31, 42080-A34, 42080-A80, 42080-A81, 411040.MM, sections 41130, 41150, 41160, and 411230 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending regulations for eating and drinking establishments, food-related drive-through service, and defining new terms, including coffee stand, commissary kitchen, and walk-up window, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right. The next ordinance is regarding Docket 231 for code interpretations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington amending subsections 4260D, 4260G, 428888, 42080889, 42110A, 42110C, 4350C3, 4390D2C, 43090E1, 46060D, 49190C1, 49250C5, and 411040QQ of the Renton Municipal Code amending sections 4180, 41110, 411160, and 411200 of the Renton Municipal Code codifying administrative code interpretations from July 1, 2022 to July 5, 2023, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor. It's always this time of year where Jason ends up having to talk a ton. With that, I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right. The next ordinance is regarding the imposition of a 0.1% sales tax. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington adding a new section 527035 to the Renton Municipal Code imposing an additional sales and use tax of 1/10 of 1% within the boundaries of the Renton Transportation Benefit District for the purpose of financing the costs associated with transportation improvements in the district as authorized by RCW 367365 and RCW 82140455, providing for severability, authorizing corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be advanced to second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right. Next is Ordinance 6124. This is for second and final reading, and it's regarding the 2023-2024 Bennial Budget Amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington amending the City of Renton Fiscal Year's 2023-2024 Bennial Budget as adopted by Ordinance Number 6088 and amended by Ordinance Numbers 6110 and 6114 by increasing budgeted revenues and expenditures by $45,804,107 and $32,577,748, respectively adopting the 2024 Salary Table, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Roll call.
I think it's roll call.
Oh, second is roll call.
But discussion, as you mentioned, discussion, and I know we did first reading last time, and I still stand in terms of, as we talk about the budget amendment, but we're also eliminating positions that are equity in housing and human services, very much the structural component. And I know that we'll be talking about the reorganization in the same breath here, G and H. And I would encourage my colleagues to reflect on it. And I think that while you don't say defunding the Equity Housing Human Services Department, but after the vote is really defunding and dissolving it completely, which is an extremist definition of what was defunded with that movement, because there's variation to that movement. But in any case, that is my thought in that. And I think it's unfortunate that we'll be eliminating positions that would advance the city forward structurally.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
If I may add, and I have a kind of inquiry first. This budget is tied to the next ordinance regarding the reorganization of EHHS, correct? This budgetary document, they're kind of tied a little bit? Can I get a?
So you're turning?
They're definitely related.
Okay. Related, and so tied.
Yeah. And I do have equal concerns. You know, unfortunately, regardless of how this person has chosen to leave, the person who was heading a lot of the rental protections and things like that ended up leaving the city, if not entirely, I think in part because of this reorg. And I think it has not been fully thought out and marinated because we did this reorganization. I mean, I wasn't a part of the council in 2020, but it occurred, I kind of, I think, out of a need. And it wasn't properly, I think, nurtured to see its full successes put into play. And now with this reorganization, I understand the benefits, and I do also have concerns that we are not going to see equity and housing uplifted with this reorganization as much as we would have if they had remained with EHHS. And those are my concerns with this budget as well as the next ordinance regarding the reorganization, because we need to prioritize those things.
Okay. So I guess, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to acknowledge a commenter from the audience earlier who mentioned that equity work does take a group. And I kind of say I fully, wholeheartedly agree with that. I don't think that this reorganization is going to dismantle that. I think it is going to uplift and empower the Equity Commission we've created that we heard from earlier tonight. And I'm not, I'm a big believer in like, if we get the work done, the systems are less particularly relevant to how the administrator handles it, as long as, and if we're centering on the voices of the Equity Commission, then we are centering equity. And I think that approach needs to be given a chance as well. I know there were some structural barriers that existed on the housing and human services side, so I'm, while well-intended, the original reorganization did not, I think, accomplish some of the things it set out to do. And this is instead, I believe, going to uplift those voices. I do think there still is potentially a missing, I know people are saying we don't need an equity manager, but I think there still could be that quarterback, point guard type position. I do think there should still be someone kind of, I want to say directing that work, but helping guide along that path. And I would look forward to that conversation. I'm forward to the Bennial Budget now, but I look forward to continuing that conversation as we continue down our journey of equity.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilperson.
It's my understanding that the budget in the reorganization, not the defunding, but the reorganization of the existing roles that used to be in EHHS, the budget includes an FTE, Full-Time Equivalent Individual, as a program manager for this work. And so that is an open position that will be filled, and they are actively recruiting for that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. Correct. So I feel compelled to make a really short statement about this. So I was here two years ago when we created it. And honestly, this was created after long discussions with staff that we thought that the work could be accomplished by creating this new department. I know there was hesitation back when we created it. Actually, there was a lot of hesitation around it. We did give it two years, and the staff really directs this movement. And the individuals doing this work are telling us that they will be able to accomplish it and actually do the work better and more efficiently, the direction they're going. So it's, you know, I appreciate that there's a lot of support around keeping this department together, and I understand that. But we're not doing the work, right? I mean, the staff is doing the work. And if we're enabling it to be done through the correct departments, it shouldn't matter. It should be about outcomes and less about the optics of whether or not we have this department done. And I fully believe that this is the correct direction to uplift this very important work. The council was very clear four years ago that these needed to be priorities. That's why we went this direction. So there's no intention to pull back or change the direction. It's just finding the path to be able to accomplish this, the best way to accomplish it, and the best way to use our resources. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Voice in the sky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I want to assure the public that we are not the funding equity. There is not, there is not intention, there is not a purpose. It's in our DNA, and it's a different way to address equity in a way that we hope works better for the city and for our residents. And more important than anything, I think, is empowering the Equity Commission. I fully agree with Councilmember Ryan McQuirry. I couldn't say it better than what he said. And again, in the long run, we need a new position, or more than one, two. This is exactly what we're addressing, and these are the needs of the community. It's in our business plan, is highlighted in our business plans. We have put it in the plan because we know that these are the priorities for our community. We, again, I reiterate it, in any way or form, we are the funding equity in Red Oak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I think somebody else is going to go. Sorry. You haven't had a chance to speak yet, have you?
No, no. Everybody's making all good points.
Okay. Excellent. So I want to share, so personally, in August of 2022, I started conversations with EHHS regarding rental registration, our rental registration program and rental protections. For a couple of months, I got the runaround. There were people who were out. People didn't know where it quite was going to go. Out of that, we discovered that, you know, the role of housing wasn't clearly defined within EHHS and who was going to kind of carry on this work, working alongside CED. And I understand, speaking to some of the staff, that in terms of the rental stuff and the rental registration program and the rental protections that we are trying to push for, that we passed unanimously on the dais to create an ordinance around, that this reorg is going to benefit that. However, the lead person who was in charge of the rental program or rental registration, who was a renter, unfortunately left us. And that position will not get filled until this reorg in the new year. And I think my concern is to ensure that the rental registration program is robustly invested in and that we push forward the rental ordinances and we don't continue to pass the buck. That's one of my fears with this reorganization, because we've continued to pass this and kick this can down the road, similar as to another initiative that we were voting on here tonight. And I would really hate to get a bunch of organizers to try to do something like Tacoma for All, to pass like a Renters' Bill of Rights. I think that's definitely, we've learned, we want to hold that information here, and we want to hold and control that here. And that's something that was expressed here on the dais. And so I think, I just want to express that concern around the rental registration that has been under conversation with staff for half the time EHHS was in existence. And hopefully that will be carried on forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
To Councilmember Rivera's point, I just want to correct a little bit of it. The rental registration program was not created by that staff person?
I understand.
It was prior, well prior, very, very well prior to that person coming. And this is bigger than one staff person.
Right.
Like, and so I think when we talk, we can talk about being concerned about someone still being here and making sure that the work progresses. But staff, we pass something. It's staff's job to make that happen. So I think making sure that we're in tune with staff and we're getting an update about what's going on in light of that person not being here anymore is important.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, I think I may also want to add to Councilmember Rivera's point. It's not perhaps the rental registration program, but the Renters' Protections Ordinance as well that has been tossed around. That's probably more what you were trying to point out. But my point is, if you're not defunding, dissolving, dismantling the department, the outcome of this is tomorrow, we won't have that department. So it's gone. If you're not defunding this department, then why are we having to eliminate the positions? If there are four positions in that position, that department, then it should translate to all the different other departments that you were purportedly putting these position in.
Mr. Mayor.
So that's just kind of my.
Better, better. How about you?
That's just kind of my thought process, that we are putting less emphasis on the work that we've been saying that we're trying to put in, more emphasis to, which is Equity Housing Human Services. And that's a huge concern. Where we allocate our funds, we heard the outcry of small businesses, human service needs. So it's not adding up. So just kind of help me making that make sense.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. To that point, it's not as though it has to be an even-steven swap for positions. It's about what the positions, what the responsibilities were, what you're trying to get on the back end. It could be adding certain tasks and responsibility to one position to another. I have to disagree with the premise that, well, you must be dismantling if it's not there anymore. That happens all the time in corporations where maybe one position is eliminated. But those two, but maybe the duties are split and they're still there. So to that, it sounded to me as though it's really, this whole thing, it sounds like it's really getting more convoluted than it is. And I think you've said it well, Councilmember McGurven. And I think we're getting too caught up in the letters. EHHS, well, this is the department that should be here. That's not the goal. The goal is the end game of what we're trying to create. And I would ask that everybody just kind of step back and listen to what observations were made and actions were taken in order to get to that end game. You don't have to stick with it for five or six years. If you know that your game plan isn't working out the way you thought, you make adjustments and keep moving forward. And I feel that's what we're doing. And I just don't want it to get lost in some of the things that I've been hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My last comment on this. We've done a lot of this work before there was, even before EHHS was a glimmer in anyone's eye. The Housing Action Plan happened before EHHS was created. A lot of the other stuff that we've done on equity, diversity, equity, inclusion was done before EHHS was created. So we did all that work without a department. And if staff is coming to us and saying, "This doesn't work the way it was intended to work," then let's figure out what works better. It's just that simple to me.
There's no defunding. Okay. If that's it, we have, I think we have a vote on the floor here.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Yep.
Ready for a roll call?
Roll call, yes.
Okay, sir. Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Nay.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Nay.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, five ayes, two nays.
All right. Motion passes.
The final ordinance is regarding amending Title III. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington amending subsection 314B, section 325, subsection 335C, and section 363 of the Renton Municipal Code repealing Chapter 5 of Title III of the Renton Municipal Code, renaming and reorganizing city departments and positions, updating references to rename departments, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council adopt the ordinance as read.
Second. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council adopt the ordinance as read. The second reading requires a roll call. Is there any discussion beforehand? Okay. Roll call, please.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Nay.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Nay.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, five ayes, two nays.
All right. Motion carries. We are on to new business. Let's see here. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 11, at 5:45 PM, we will have the committee of the whole meeting in the council chambers here and via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, and that is the Sound Transit update. And Monday, December 11, at 7 PM, our regularly scheduled council meeting will be here in council chambers and via video conference. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have any new business. However, I do want to inquire and possibly move the motion depending on point of information. Since EHHS has no longer been in existence, can we have a committee of whole presentation on the outcomes and measurables and what we've learned from EHHS, presented a committee of whole in 2024? And I wonder if we can motion or vote or talk to incoming President Prince. I need a little guidance on the procedure here.
I'm happy to have that presentation.
Should we all vote on it?
I don't think we need to.
Okay.
To this committee, yeah.
Yeah, to my committee, so we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On December 11, Monday, December 11, at 1:45 PM, the Utilities Committee will meet in the council conference room and via video conference. One item on the agenda, agreement with Cascadia Consulting Group for Solid Waste Planning and Technical Services, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 11, 2023, at 2:30 PM, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room and also via video conference. There are seven items on the agenda. First, organize Crime and Drug Enforcement Task Force for year 2024. Second, Washington State Department of Transportation, 2023-2025, Transportation Demand Management Implementation Agreement. Third, professional services agreement with Risk Solutions from Limited LLC for Safety Agent Services.
Fourth, renewal of the CE's liability insurance policies for 2024. Fifth, agreement for budgeted some energy to waive and release cash surety for the federal department. Sixth, vouchers, and seventh, emerging issues with finance. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Before I go and announce my Planning Development Committee, Committee, I just want to add that the CEO of Sound Transit, Julie Timm, will be here for that Sound Transit update on Monday. So added benefit that the CEO of Sound Transit is going to be here. At Monday, December 11th, at 4:30 PM, the Planning Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and by video conference. We have four items on the agenda. One, docket 18, Group C, D228, bonus density, amendment to the Bicycle and Trails Master Plan, long-range planning and a year in review 2023, and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce the meeting of the Transportation Committee on Monday, December 11th, at 3:45 PM in the council conference room and via video conference.